Thank you for the men and women who serve our country to give us the great freedoms that we have in this country. So we thank you, we love you, we thank you for the gift of life you give us, in your son's name we pray.
Amen.
Amen.
All right, let's.
A pleasure to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jeremy, thank you, but I'm gonna put you on the spot for a minute. Actually, Amber's not gonna be here for presentation. If you really would, if you're gonna hang out for a few minutes, we'd love to give you a few minutes just to talk about Journey Church and some of the things you do. So I'll give you a chance to sit down, bring you back up. Can we do that? All right, yeah. All right, so six oh two.
No stream.
What's that?
No stream.
No, no stream.
It's on.
She's... All right, we're gonna try to figure it out here. All right, six oh two is the start of the meeting. Call the order.
Okay, Bonnie.
Here.
Brad.
Here.
Jennifer.
Here.
Rob.
Here.
Faith.
Here.
Mike.
Here.
All right, thanks to council. And I need a motion to approve our minutes from November the tenth.
Motion.
Second.
Second by Faith.
Okay, Brad.
Yes.
Faith.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Rob.
Yes.
Bonnie.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
All right, thank you council. And obviously, before we get started here, I wanna take a couple of minutes out because there's only one topic. Traffic, traffic, and traffic. So we wanna start with that, obviously, before we get... I wanna make sure that you guys have an understanding, for the folks that are watching this on the YouTube channel. Make sure that we... Everybody understands the jurisdiction and who has control of the roads. I think it's very important. We're frustrated. I'm a resident like everybody else. I had to deal with all traffic and being an hour here, an hour there, and going out of our way to get to our family functions. So we do understand what happened. But we would like to make sure, is KYTC, who's plans all this, would invite the city officials to be involved when they're planning? Because when you close Bell's Mill Road, and then all of a sudden you close, you go down to one lane, five miles, I sixty-five southbound, you put us in a gridlock. A lot of people were very frustrated, and I don't blame them. I'm as frustrated as anybody else as far as the traffic in this city, because we're very limited to our resources in getting out. But it's very important for them, KYTC, to make sure they hear from you all. Remember, the squeaky wheel gets the oil. It's important for them to know that even with your concerns, we can at least make sure that people understand our concerns when you plan things, when we're having limited... We only have Preston Highway to get out when you shut down sixty-five in any manner at all. Accidents, we can't do anything about that. But construction, we can plan better. So I wanna make sure you know that. Also, too, I wanna encourage you to call your state legislators. They're the folks that actually work with funding at this level, and you also wanna reach out to your US Senator and our US Representative to make sure they know our concerns. Sixty-five is a vital part, not only the city, but a vital part of this part of the country. So there's gotta be some concerns when traffic goes like it does and gridlocks us here. We didn't ask for that. We didn't ask for the situation for the last two weeks. So three weeks ago, three weeks ago, Arthur and Scott and I, we signed a contract with Strand Engineering Company to try to help us. Because obviously, seeing there's a lot of frustration from my level, as well as all the residents, and making sure that our legislators and KYTC knows, work with us, plan better with us, so we have a better opportunity to try to make sure that our folks know what's going on. But when you plan projects together like that, all in one area of sixty-five, within about a five-mile area of Shepherdsville, we got what we got the last two weeks. So very frustrating. I know it's frustrating for everybody here at the council. You know, as a resident, we don't appreciate that part, but we do appreciate having partners that will work with us. All we ask you to do is encourage to call them, because right now, we need that more than ever, to make sure, because we do want, we're looking at another interchange. We are looking at expanding sixty-one. We've been talking about it for over two and a half years. Also, we would like to see somewhere, somewhere in the next five or ten years, there's an artery on the other side of sixty-five. So we have better options of getting out of here. That takes money, okay? That's not money that we have. And, as I started this conversation, we do not control those roads. So for everybody, I appreciate your frustrations, but you need to know who runs these roads. KYTC controls those roads, not only in the city itself, but the interstate as well. So please reach out to them. We expect that we handle things professionally. I know we're frustrated, but call these people with some dignity and just let them know that we're concerned about what has happened the last two weeks. It was a very rough two weeks. It was kinda like the flood, remember in April? Kinda like that. It was very frustrating when something happens. So it's important for you guys to know that. I appreciate you listening, but I need to make sure everybody understands what we can and cannot do. Because I can tell you, when you listen to social media, people don't really know the responsibility of the city when it comes to the roads. These are state roads. Preston Highway, sixty-one, forty-four, four-eighty, ten-twenty, Beach Grove Road, West Blulick are all state roads. It's important for you all to know that. We have to go to the right people to take care of those. Interstate is a federally run highway. We have to go through them to get anything done. And we've been working on that, but obviously, what they did this last time was very frustrating for everybody. So thank you guys for listening. All right, I'm gonna have Jeremy Willis, why don't you come up here first? We're just gonna switch it up a little bit, let you come up here and talk a little about yourself. I know a lot of people know you, Jeremy, but share a few things about you and Journey. Just the top part right there, right at the front, right at the front. No, other way. Right there.
There we go. All right. Well, for you guys to know, we've been in this community for about fourteen years now. We're in the Old Ridge Mount Furniture Building over there, right next to the river. And so we've been there for a while, and we love to partner with the city as much as we can. We've done a couple of big events over the years, including our Fall Festival. We did our Grinchmas, although this year, because of the flood, we're still in a rebuild phase, so we weren't able to do that this year. But we're just here, and I met with Mayor a few weeks ago and just told him, I mean, we're here for the community as best as we can, not just the people that attend our church, but for the community at large. When we started fourteen years ago, we all read a book together, and it talked about this idea that, you know, most churches, if they closed down their doors tomorrow, nobody would even care other than the people that attend their church. And so we've always operated that if we ever had to close down, which hopefully we never have to, that there would be a hole in the city where we were. And so we're here for the city, any way we can do, anything we can do to partner with the city. We have a great partnership with Bullet County Public Schools as well, helping them in anything we can. We delivered, gosh, three hundred pounds of food over to Beat Bullock Central today to help feed some families during Thanksgiving. We have a closed closet, food pantry, all that stuff that's open every day of the week, that people can come and get some help. And so we're here for the community, and so anything we can do to help, we'd be happy to do.
So Jeremy, I wanna make sure that now, in those fourteen years, what, how many was in the first group that you started with?
Fifteen people.
Yeah, was it, and it always says, how many were family, right? Something like that?
None of them were family, yeah. They didn't believe it.
But what is it now?
Uh, well, on Sundays, we run a little bit over six hundred, but in an average month, we have about twelve hundred people that attend our church.
So it is a lot of what you do. We appreciate that. I think the biggest thing for us is as we co-uh saw all these partnerships with all the different churches, we did something for the white flag.
Yep.
It's obviously, I think, working because everybody's working together. I think that's a good thing. But I'm looking forward to all our partnership.
Yep.
Got a lot of good things coming up. But thank you for...
No problem.
Glad to be here. Thank you, sir. All right. All right, so Ms. Casa, come on up. We're gonna call you Ms. Casa, but Jamie, come up here and introduce yourself. If you will, you saw what that fine gentleman did. If you'll just click the front of that, on top there, right there, there you go.
Well, good evening, Mayor, council members, and community guests. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Jamie Noon, and I am the CEO of Casa of the River Region. Casa Court Appointed Special Advocates provides trained volunteers to advocate for children who have experienced abuse and neglect, giving them a consistent, caring presence in an often confusing and frightening system. This year, seventy-three children in Bullet County have had a Casa volunteer by their side. But a hundred and eighty-six children in our county remain in the system without the support, without a trusted adult to check on their well-being, to make sure their voices are heard, and to help guide decisions in family court. These hundred and eighty-six children are counting on us to step in and be that consistent, caring presence. Casa volunteers visit children regularly, attend court hearings, and connect families to needed services. They help children feel safe, supported, and empowered. Research shows that children with Casa volunteers experience fewer placement disruptions, succeed more in school, and have their cases resolved more quickly. Simply put, having a Casa volunteer changes a child's story. That's why we need your help. We are actively recruiting volunteers from Bullet County, people from all walks of life, who are willing to dedicate just a few hours a month to make a lasting difference. Every volunteer matters. Every hour matters. Every child matters. If you're interested or know someone who might be interested, please visit our website at www.casarr.org/volunteer to learn more and get started. By stepping up as a Casa volunteer, you can give a child the voice, care, and advocacy they deserve, and change their story forever. Thank you for your time, your attention, and your commitment to the children and your community.
So Jamie, I wanna do two things for you. Amber's not here tonight. She's had some family things she's gotta take care of. But I wanna make sure you get hooked up with her, putting something out on our social media to let people know about volunteering. This lady knows about volunteering.
Yes, please.
Yeah. And I was with thirteen years with Casa. I was the chair for four. And I think the hardest part about this is that it is tough. We have a hundred and eighty-six kids that just need some guidance. I was a big brother for over twenty years, and I can tell you that I like being, I know Bonnie can say this, if you wanna say anything, Bonnie, but it's a very challenging, heartbreaking situation that you've gotta be very involved. I know Dawn and Shannon do a great job for you guys.
I was gonna say, you have two of the best here in Bullet County.
Would love to hear it from you.
The people that are listening, and for you all, it is a great thing to volunteer and do it. I did it for many years. You get to know these kids and love these kids, and you do make a difference. I fought hard for the kids that I had. Several of them got adopted into absolutely great families. If you've got time to do it, I mean, it's not too time-consuming. You go to court for them, and you speak for these children. And sometimes you learn things that no one else learns when you're with them. You're their eyes and your ears. I have one child that I was the only female in his life, that stayed the only positive female in his life for the four years that I had him. And it's a tremendous connection that you get that you never lose. And I would like to see more people help. Men and women both need to volunteer and help these kids.
It's tremendous. I mean, once you said men, that's obviously a shortage of having male figures in some of these kids' lives. So I just wanna tell you, it's a wonderful program. I know we switched up things as far as we, it's a regional piece now
Yep.
from the Temple of Bullet County. But I, let us know, we'll get all the information. Just send me some stuff that you want, and I'll have Amber put it out on there.
I definitely will. Thank you so much. We actually have a twenty-five by the end of twenty-twenty-five campaign right now, because again, we need volunteers, and we specifically need them here in Bullet County. We are offering a training. We will be offering a training here in Bullet County in twenty-twenty-six. And we have lots of flexible training options. So there's a training that just started last week on the eighteenth. And so if you wanna get started, I will catch you up. And we do into that training class, but we also offer flexible options. So if people say, Jamie, a class setting doesn't really work for me, but I've been a former volunteer, I've been a big, I've been a teacher, I've, you know, I've got some additional experience, we will train you one-on-one. So there are lots and lots of flexible options, so.
The training's amazing.
Don't wait on your New Year's resolutions. Get a jump on those.
Jamie, thank you. I really appreciate you being here. Like I said, again, we'll bring you back in the spring and kinda get us a follow-up on what we've been doing.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Jamie. All right, happy Thanksgiving to you. You know, I was gonna make a joke about this next half, that's okay. All right, so come on up and see us. You know, we love you.
So I passed out a little one-pager for you guys, just kinda bringing up the speed on the furniture there at the Aquatic Center. You guys opened those bids a few weeks ago. Little unsatisfied with how those came out, and so we dug into those numbers pretty hard and renegotiated with those companies. One of the companies didn't really wanna move much, and the other one was a lot more flexible and understood that we're not trying to roll out Rolls Royce, but we still want something good and dependable type situation. And so what I've got before you tonight, we've gone back into the numbers, brought down the pricing. So instead of spending somewhere between four-hundred-and-sixty-eight and six-hundred-and-twelve-thousand dollars, I'm now bringing you guys an alternative that allows you to do the interior furniture through MBI, and then do the state bid pricing through DWA Recreation for one-seventy-seven, giving you guys a savings of over a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars on that furniture. So just wanna give that to you guys. You guys can, you know, make a motion to use those two as your furnishings for the Aquatic Center. And then we've also got to talk about city projects, I hear. Which one would you like to hear about first?
Well, you go ahead. Start with the Aquatic Center. All right.
What's that? The cheapest?
No, then that...
Well, then let's go to the opposite.
Before I forget, just, Arthur, first of all, thank you, because they called me, and we had you guys bid on the product. We were able to say, that's, we can do better. And so you guys approved an X amount, we've been able to drop it that.
Let's go ahead and get that out of the way.
Yeah, so that's what I was gonna get ready to ask.
Let's make a motion.
What can I ask? A question?
Absolutely.
About the furniture?
Yeah.
So like, what actually is included, like, what are we getting? So it says, like, interior furniture. What is the interior furniture? Is it just tables and chairs, or is it like?
Tables and chairs and desks and loungers.
Oh.
So it's gonna be a list of...
So are they gonna have, like, oh, gosh, I can't even think of what they're called right now?
Bleachers?
Bleachers, thank you.
Okay, so the bleachers in the Aquatic Center for the three hundred people that are gonna be there in attendance to watch the meets and whatnot?
Yeah.
Those are gonna be built into the facility.
Okay.
We are planning on having some bleachers on the side for the competitors and whatnot, but we're not purchasing those yet. We're gonna do that in coordination with the management team as they come in, because they have connections for those.
Yeah, okay. Okay. So this is like tables and chairs?
Tables, chairs, desks, lounges.
Yeah.
Just think of the all-interior.
Or areas, like, yeah.
Because there's gonna be a comfy couch in the lobby to make it all ritzy and pretty and stuff.
Okay, so it's just that, okay.
That stuff.
And then the stuff outside is just regular sunlight sound?
Chairs, tables, bingo, umbrellas. Yeah, pure typical.
Okay.
One question. There's gonna be a point where they have to be replaced for wear and tear or vandalism, whatever. Are they readily available to do that?
Yes, that's the intent. We are trying to use locally sourced furniture as best we can. And so these companies that we've got pricing and whatnot from are here in the state. And then one of these suppliers that's actually manufacturing the stuff is out of Simpsonville, right here. And so not far away, kinda neighbors to us. And so I like that option of having something close and somebody that's dependable, somebody you can put a face to, like, that you know is gonna be around. And so absolutely, that was taken into consideration with these.
Okay. Oh, replacement cost would, like, would they replace it at the same cost, or like?
We don't know.
Yeah, like a little packaging?
That could vary.
I don't have that. We're probably gonna be three or four years out before we have to replace. I mean, I hope so, my goodness.
I know.
But beyond that, market fluctuations, they can't commit.
Okay.
You know, they can give us like a six-month guarantee.
Okay, yeah.
We're probably not gonna replace furniture with that in six months, so.
Arthur, is there a reason why DWA didn't submit a bid on the original request, or?
I don't know if it was a lack of advertising, because we put it on the Pioneer News and whatnot, but we had had Luck and Farley's put out this advertisement and coordinate, but nobody else was bidding on this. And so when I reached out to DWA, they didn't even know about it.
Oh, wow.
And I'm just like, man, you guys are bidding on all these other state projects, like, why didn't, and they were like, we didn't know. And so I'm like, well, here's the deal. I need better pricing.
Yeah. I mean, they could've fulfilled the entire project, though, right? Or could, could they not?
Actually, they do not supply the indoor furniture.
Okay.
So this was their proposed...
So when we put bids in, when we put bids in, do they go to all the newspapers under?
No, we advertise in the local. We're required to local.
Okay, so we don't do like the double bill and the understand?
Okay. That would cost us a fortune, and then we put it on our online.
Yes.
And then they put it out.
Yeah.
Even in bigger places, but...
Typically, we get a lot better return, but this one wasn't good, so we got a little more heavily involved in the actual procurement to make sure that we were getting a better deal. I wasn't satisfied.
Do you wanna ask your question? You can ask it.
So, Arthur, is the alternative furniture proposed by MBI, is that what you're going with for the interior? Is there proposed bid?
Their proposed interior furniture at one-on-one is the alternative furniture from the original.
Okay, but that was their proposal in their bid, right?
This is, this is part of their bid, yes.
Okay. Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Yep. Because they gave two options in theirs. They had one and an alternative. And then when we opened up dialogue with the others, they're like, nah, that's it. That's all we got.
Okay.
Okay.
So is your motion to approve MBI and WD, or DWA both? Okay.
I'll second.
All right, Bonnie.
Yes.
Faith.
Yes, I guess.
Mike?
He's a lot of money.
I agree.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
And Brad?
Yes.
Yeah, when you start looking at a lot of this, it's, it's, it's a lot.
Huge. Yeah, all these numbers, huge. After zeros, everything. That's what I thought. I was like, eh, we're going to the basement.
But you're talking...
Again, but you're talking the complete inside, and again, you...
I know, but still.
And then the outside, you're talking all the chairs, like the lounger chairs, and then tables and chairs, and umbrellas, and all this stuff. There's probably gonna be a whole lot.
Oh, there's quite a few. I mean, there's quite a few.
We didn't see that.
Yeah. I don't know how many, but I figured it's gonna be a whole lot.
I think there are quantities in the bids.
Yeah, if you, if you see the bids, you'll see that in there.
Yeah.
Mike?
So Aquatic Center otherwise, we're getting ready to start breaking ground on the interior pool. The exterior pool is underway. They're building that right now. Of course, muddy conditions, as you could expect, but because they've got a lot of the Aquatic Center under roof now, a lot of the interior is just going right on. You know, there is no weather delay on that interior space right now. And so once we break ground on the interior pool, you know, that's gonna go fairly quickly. So that's on progress. We're on point to get that done within the project calendar that we've got laid out for that project. So very excited about that. Also, right now, you may have seen a large disturbance in the parking lot in front of the Aquatic Center. So half of that parking lot, we're trying to go ahead and get done before the end of the year. So if we can get a few dry days to string together, our intent is to go ahead and have half of that parking lot established to go ahead and have us some nice, clean space to start, and then we'll flip-flop and then disturb the other side as soon as spring breaks. That way, we're not trying to do all of it at the same time. We're trying to break that up so that you can keep things moving. So that's kinda where that project is right now. Aquatic Center's on the march, going where it needs to.
So, you know, we've obviously sent some pictures out there for folks to see as far as the newscast. But I wanna make sure people understand, we're on schedule, which is important to this, because as far as the training and everybody else, next week, I actually get a pro forma for what they're gonna actually go through. So we're gonna go through and add some bolts up next week. They're gonna, we're gonna figure out traffic counts, and what does it have to be per child to go, or per adult to go to the Aquatic Center? Once we get those numbers, and when we come back in January, have something open to the public, so everybody can hear all about memberships, cost for a day, sponsorships, marketing for all this, because there's gonna be a number of things that you could do. We've, we saw that when we went to different ones that we looked at, that we got a chance to see what the, you know, some, actually some revenue can help us, and they help us with that as well. So there's just a different cut if they do it. But if we cut it, it's a hundred percent our money, so we're gonna hustle to get those first. I do think it's important for people to know, we'll have more in the next couple of months to really have what it's like for the public to know what it's gonna cost. Because this is gonna be the thing that we really wanna do, is, is it, was affordable piece. We said ten, could be lower than that. Obviously, for kids, it's gonna be lower than that. But I mean, for the, just using it as a mark, the response we get from most people is, all day swimming for that, that's great. So we do already know that, but we also know that we have people in our community that are gonna need some assistance, and we're gonna work with that, too. That's a critical piece in this. But we'll have more information on the parts that people are gonna ask about. How much does it cost? And that's important for you to know. But Arthur, I do like our progress. I know we've made some changes, some things have happened with the folks out there. You know, we have, if you guys remember, you had a contract that we, that we signed. It was all itemized, if everything was in there. So they can't go over that number. So again, it's up to them to make sure they finish on time. The things that we're responsible for, like that, saving a bunch of money on the furniture, is important. It is expensive. Everything's expensive. When you start thinking about the cost of some of these things, it'll drive you crazy, especially the...
What's the time? You said...
Oh, I'm sorry, January five-thirty. Oh, oh, and that's finishing. No. Yeah, they're attentively looking at March the thirtieth, but again, we keep all that, just you guys. But that means we're still looking, our dead date to open is the Memorial Weekend. That is still what we're looking to do for the public. We just choose attentively to give you a date, but those numbers really do change. We feel pretty comfortable. They're working with us now, right? Good communication line. But we've got weather coming up, and, you know, and we've been pretty spoiled on that, so hopefully we don't get, you know, knock on something.
You thinking maybe an earlier day for the indoor pool?
No.
Because of the schools?
No. No. You got, you got, you got training, you got new people doing, you gotta make sure you do all that, roll that out right. And so it would be best...
It's gonna take every bit of that to finish.
It's gonna be very intense, and this is why we brought somebody in to do it, because that is not a purview. And I, and I just know from opening up restaurants, it's a really intense time for these folks. We wanna make sure that we...
So no early open on the fitness center?
No, there's not, there's not fitness centers, the pickleball courts.
Oh, I thought there was gonna be a fitness.
Yeah, we may utilize some of that pickleball score, uh, pickleball courts to do some things like it. We just, we're working with them to see if...
So now it's just gonna be pickleball and...
It's what it was, yeah. Pickleball courts, yeah, indoor courts, and they look, they look wonderful. They're getting ready to put the coating down in probably the next two, three weeks. It's really remarkable, and we will try to make some time. If you guys wanna try to get over there, we can show you what it looks like so far, because the progress is good.
Can we go in? Like, can we go in?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Okay. I mean, I can't...
Wear your boots and your PPE, so your flex...
Yeah, you gotta be, you're gonna have to have, yeah. You'll get you some helmets and stuff to go in there. You gotta have, you gotta have your...
I got that stuff. I got all that stuff.
We'll take care of it.
We'll take care of it. So we'll make sure, we'll get some chance to see, because it's really, it's remarkable. I mean, it's remarkable what's happening there. So again, it's the biggest prize, but we're very excited about that. But don't we have some other projects going on?
We do have a few other projects going on. So you guys got a, an email from me just like last week, following up from an email you got from me a couple of weeks ago, giving you the wrong date on the opening that we're trying to do for the wastewater treatment plant improvements. And it's December the sixteenth. It's a Tuesday at five. And so Tuesday, five, December the sixteenth, we're gonna be opening bids for the wastewater treatment plant improvements. We are projecting that's gonna be somewhere between the twenty-three to twenty-five million dollar project, another big whammy for us. That is gonna be a lot of the funding. Of course, you guys are already aware, but in case there's public that's looking at this, there's about ten million dollars of grant funding that we got for that project, and then the rest of it is funded through low-interest loans through the SRF funds. SRF is the State Revolving Funds. It's a state-provided program that allows us to buy or borrow money at a much reduced rate. Rather than pay six or eight percent interest, we're gonna be like two-point-two-five percent interest, so much better for our customers to be able to do that.
Arthur, how many clarifiers will that add?
Two additional clarifiers. And so it'll essentially double our clarification at that treatment plant. It's amazing. It's gonna be fantastic.
Because of the stormwater runoff, we still have not capacity of what we have. So we've got plenty of room still in our original operation. We're just looking at it down the road, but the housing that's coming to us, all the progress that's gonna come to the city, we need to have it in the next ten, twenty years. So doing it now is getting ready for what's gonna happen the next ten, twenty years. That's a proactive approach. Like to share that with some of the things that's happening in the city twenty years ago.
Well, we do have, unlike the roadway system, we do have control of the sanitary system.
We do. Again, that point was, thank you, Arthur. Twenty years ago, it'd been a great time to find infrastructure.
But that's not stopping us also from the coordination, like our meeting earlier at the end of last week when we were talking about this. You know, conversations today with Tom Hall and them at KYTC, they understand where they're at and some of the mistakes that have been made. And so there's more coordination already happening, and so we're not gonna let that drop. And so we're gonna continue to push to get more of this done. But we did everything we could on the timing of the lights. I don't know if you guys are aware, but about a month ago, the timing of the lights changed. And so at this current moment, if you were out there, you know, last week, you may have seen a huge amount of cars all just funneling down to the intersection of Joe B. Hall, Conesthor, Adam Shepard, and Forty-four, and then it was just a huge wait to be able to get over sixty-five and through the congested area until you got over Floyd's Fork. Well, I don't have a magic wand to make that road wider or give us another lane over there, but from a programming standpoint and from a traffic management standpoint, when we coordinated up with Stan Tech, who was doing the consulting work for the state, we had them fix the timing of all the lights around here, and so the lights were not the problem. The timing of the lights was keeping people going as best as we could with the huge volume we were experiencing, but there just wasn't enough road to let them out. And so it's a terrible situation, but I don't have a quick fix for that. We did everything we could with the lights to try to make that through the best, because it's a hundred and eighty seconds right now in the timing, north to south on sixty-one. That's the most you can put on these lights. Like, here in this region, that's the max. And so we maxed every one of them up. That way, we can get as many people through town as we tell, like, as much as we can.
And we maxed it on the Preston, both ways, that way and Forty-four. Both of them are all at one-eight, both ways. So we maxed those out to make sure we can get most of that. I think that's the key to this, is that, and we're also talking about the west side of Forty-four. We've reached out to KYTC, and I, I reached out to Judge Summers today and make sure that they're moving some of that construction so we can get that middle lane on that side, right?
Right.
Around the Bratcher Estates and coming towards the junction there. We need that turning lane, because of all the growth that's gonna be there, if you haven't seen that already over there.
Big time.
Right. So obviously, you wanna...
So yeah, that's Treatment Plant. Treatment Plant's gonna happen. You guys will see those bids come in. Got great input so far, so I really don't think we're gonna get just two bids on this one, because I've already got like seven contractors chomping at the bit. They're coming out and doing tours of the plant. I had two tours last week. I've got another one scheduled for ten-thirty in the morning. And so everybody's really excited about this project. Not only are we excited about it adding two clarifiers, the contractors are excited about it because it's attractive. It's a great project. When they come out and tour, their first comment is, oh, wow, you guys really take care of your facility. So kudos to our guys out there in the field taking care of our stuff. Like, they are doing a great job. We've got great personnel on the ground, keeping our place up to snuff and maintained well, because strangers are noticing when they come to our place. And so... Keeping our place up to snuff and maintained well because strangers are noticing when they come to our place. And so, um that's awesome. So, I'm really excited about the wastewater treatment plant. Next, we've got, of course, downtown, you've got the streetscape that hasn't happened yet, but we're already planning for. Utility relocation also planning for. Then you've got Town Square. Town Square, you've seen the big bollards come up for the archway. And so, now, we're going through the design on the archway and they are going ahead and sourcing that sign. And so, hopefully, come springtime, we'll be seeing a big beautiful Shepherdsville sign up there. I'm just, I'm, I'm really excited about next Christmas. Uh I mean, not to like downplay this Christmas, but next Christmas, when the Shepherdsville signs up and that area is done. We could put a giant Christmas tree in there, like, that's gonna be awesome.
Yeah, you see, I mean, it's.
It's gonna be really amazing. Beyond that, you've got the trailhead. That's already in full force. Um the restrooms there at the trailhead are already in. Um we've already got the sewers and all connected and whatnot over there. Hopefully, you know, get some dry time over there, get some sod down, get that prettied up. And so, come springtime also, the trailhead's gonna look awesome right there at the beginning of the park. And just welcoming everybody as they come in to enjoy the park at, uh on the other side, where the amphitheater and the um.
Playground.
Playground and splash pad and all that are, if you haven't seen it, as a council member, you should. And so, if you need, if you want somebody to drive you out there or give you a quick tour or something, call Scott or I, let us know. We'd be happy to take you out there and and let you see. Like, the, the progress is somewhat stunning. Um we are gonna have something that we can be extremely proud of. Once this project is complete. And so, by the time that we get into that full uh fall weather next year. Like, I'm really excited about having that grass all established and all of that up and running, like, it's, it's gonna be something we can all be proud of.
So, I did actually go and see that. Did you go see it? I did. All right.
Did they have the glue lamb up, like the, the big wooden beams and stuff up yet when you saw it?
Wooden beams?
Yeah, for the roof support?
Oh, no, he's talking about, he's talking about the wastewater, I mean, the stormwater line. Yeah, cuz we, he, he asked.
I thought you were saying the, the pavilion.
The pavilion looks nice.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it looks, it looks, you walk through, yeah, it's pretty cool. Is that a retention pond at the south side?
Yes, it's like a ceiling basin, and so, any and all, like sediment, it has an opportunity to settle out, and then we'll dredge that out periodically. But huge ceiling basin before it goes on out and then through the wetlands and then into the Salt River.
Okay, so like, I guess, like some kind of like French drain lateral land, something that goes out from there?
It'll actually build a spillway up and out, and so, opportunity for that stuff to settle out. But just a great way for us to be responsible while also solving a problem. You know, we're solving the problem of drainage in the city. We're also being very responsible with that water discharge, and so, we're cleaning that water. It's almost like a stormwater treatment plant, the way that we're running it through the wetlands and stuff like that, so. Doesn't cost us anymore to work right alongside by their nature, and so, we're leaning into it and doing the best we can to, yeah, like a cohesion project more or less.
So, is everything on track there? I mean, when's it gonna be completed?
So, as of right now.
Weather related, it could be later.
Absolutely. But I'm targeting right now that side of the park, fall of twenty-six.
Everything? That's splash pad, playground, the pipe?
Yes.
Cuz I understand the splash pad will be done before summer.
Before summer of twenty-six?
Yeah, but we had delays on the.
Gotta make sure we got access in there too. So, depending on parking and how much that parking lot we can complete. And how much that big equipment that I have to keep on site versus have to take off site, we will open it as soon as we can. Because somebody will not let us keep it closed any longer than we have to.
Not me. I'll be on your ass forever.
So.
Chomping at the bit, so as soon as we can get it open, we will open it.
So, also, it's important to remember, part of it is we had the problem with the permitting on, on the, with the stormwater line. We, we went through a, and that delayed us two months.
But I mean, we're talking about a pipe so big, like, I've never seen anybody trenching with a bulldozer before.
Yeah.
Like, it's pretty amazing. I got a picture today of the bulldozer making the trench.
Yeah, it's pretty wild. Nine six inches is a pretty tough line.
It's pretty cool.
So, we'll come over there next week. I know this week's gonna. That's what I was gonna say. Vacation, you know. We should coordinate a day, because I can come next week, cuz I don't have events next week, so we need to coordinate a day so we can get one of y'all to take us.
Sweet. We'd love to give you a tour.
We'll give you though.
Okay.
I, while he's up here.
Yep.
I know, ever since I've been on the council, Bonnie has also, other members have changed. And almost every year in the budget, we have money for wastewater treatment plant improvements. And nothing ever got done, pretty much, pretty much. Nothing big, nothing. We, we always mentioned the clarifiers. But they're still not there. But we didn't, we only worked within the funds we had. We didn't use that borrowing power to get the low interest loans, to pursue the grants, you know? Now, we have it to where we can proceed and actually see the progress and put it in the ground, so. Uh I commend this administration as much as it hurts some.
I know it hurts some people.
It's gonna break out the rash.
Yeah. And you guys, you know, for doing a great job of uh getting that lined out and.
Well, you know, it's a team effort. I mean, nothing happens without you guys here with us too. And so, regardless of how hard Jose pushes us, it takes all of us to get this sort of stuff done. You know, you guys give us the budget to be able to move forward and move on these projects. And uh I've never gone this far, this fast with this much going on at one time.
Yes.
Um but even to that end, it's all worth the effort. It's all worth the time and the energy and the pain. That it ensues because it is for a better future for our community. Like, that is without a doubt what motivates us as a team of staff members. We know it's hard. We know it's a lot of work a- ahead of us and a lot that we have to, are like accomplishing every day. But we are encouraged because we know it's worth it for our community.
It's good to see the progress.
So, so Arthur, Niall, and Scott, when we talk about this, this transformational year next year, the kind of things that happened, it's never happened in Shepherdsville, never. So, the kind of things that we're doing now are really for what we just said. I, I love all of you, but I'm more worried about your kids and your grandkids and having something here for them to actually live and enjoy. That's something that's been missing in here for years. We talk about infrastructure, and we talk about water. We know those things. We're working on the water and we're still needing help from the infrastructure. So, I think for us, we're trying to plan out the growth as much as we control. But I tell you, I, I appreciate Arthur then being patient with me, cuz I, I go over there every other day, tell him, when are we done? When are we done? When are we done? Because we do, we all, it's a lot, but I mean, it's kind of hard to go look over there. When you guys go see it, you're just, it's like, when you see the playground, it's amazing. It is amazing. And so, then we had to wait on a permit for the splash pad. We've got a lady that we're having to get her a blessing, and uh we know who she is. And I say anything bad about you, Jan. Um but we gotta wait for it. I had to do that out loud, because I do think it's, it's important what she does. But it's important with what we're trying to do, and so, that's what, that's the permit issue on that.
Well, it's been five years, you know?
Well, it went on a lot longer than it should have gone on. Yeah, but that's all right. We're gonna make sure, cuz we don't want Faith coming back to get us when she's gone. All right, no. Anyway, so Arthur, thank you. We got a lot of good projects. If you guys wanna make time, please do it. Two, like, two at a time would be great, obviously. Just get with him and then plenty of time. When you go see all the stuff, you're, you're gonna be very proud. Thank you, Arthur. Appreciate that. All right.
I'll bring snacks.
She's gonna, Jennifer's got snacks. So, Jennifer's got snacks. She gonna bring fruit snacks, cuz the fruit snacks, he gets it, I gotta take.
You know, she's on a diet, so it's kinda like.
All right, I don't get it. All right, so we have no, so we have no old business, and I wanna make sure we get started here. Ms. Catherine, we have uh our first one here, zero two five zero five zero.
City of Shepherdsville, Kentucky, ordinance zero two five zero five zero, and ordinance amending ordinance zero one eight two six nine as amended. At the city of Shepherdsville, related to requiring a fence around dumpsters within the city of Shepherdsville, sponsored by Councilmember Bonnie Enlow. Summary, section one sets forth that ordinance zero one eight two six nine is amended as follows. Section two sets forth that section eight, related to penalties, is amended to provide as follows. That violations of this ordinance shall be subject to a civil, civil penalty of one hundred dollars per violation. That each dumpster that is not enclosed as required by this ordinance shall be deemed one violation. That each day that a violation of this ordinance occurs is a separate and distinct offense. That payment of the civil penalty does not relieve the property owner of their requirement to remedy violations of this ordinance. Section three sets forth a severability clause. Section four sets forth a repugnatory ordinances in conflict with this ordinance. Section five sets forth the publication requirement. And so, just to let you all know, these penalties kind of match the penalties that you guys set forth in the um property maintenance ordinance.
We did, we met with code enforcement. We wanted to make sure it's consistent with that, and kind of keeping things simple. That's the purpose of this amendment, so you guys know. Don't know if you have any questions?
Yes, I do.
All right. What you got, Mike? Well, good. I'd rather be in the first reading. I'd rather be in the first reading. Go ahead. What you got?
Uh now that we've spent a bunch of money, maybe we can save some for our businesses. I've thought about this. And uh we're gonna amend, we're not gonna re- to uh rescind an ordinance. We're gonna amend it to bring it up. We promote ourselves as a uh business community. We wanna attract business. We wanna keep businesses here. And I don't know what kind of revenues involved in all of this. Uh I'd have to check with code enforcement, I guess.
It's not much.
But rather than bring the uh. Old ordinance up and raise the fine, why don't we consider lowering it to the seventy-five on the new one?
I, I, I'll be honest with you. The reason we did it is to be consistent. I can tell you right now, we're negotiating with everybody. The purpose of this ordinance was for aesthetics. We wanted people to take care and have safety. Some of these are in apartment complexes. They leave them out there where kids can get around them, okay? And there are eyesores when you go in that forty-four. So, all we ask, we're, Mike, we're going to these businesses, we are not doing this as a punitive thing. We are actually talking to each of these businesses. If they can put them in places you can't see them, we don't want your money. We just want the dumpsters out of the way. And the only way that you make that happen is you put an ordinance. But I do have the liberty of actually being able to negotiate with each of these businesses. And we're trying to work with them. If they just move it to out of sight, but still be serviced by Republic, then we make it work with them. But we, I don't even know, we, we haven't collected a dime yet, by the way.
I've seen uh somebody call me on one that received a, a, a notice. And uh they have a dumpster at a business and then a piece of property behind it, which is also zone commercial. It's vacant, fairly large, but on the other side of that is residential. So, the residential is far enough away, it doesn't, uh it's not adjacent to it. And, and because of that empty lot, they uh, they're, they're having to do this.
So, so my first question is, when they get the notices, we encourage them just to call Ray and Jeff, and they will call me, we'll go out and check it out. We are not. Mike, I can tell you right now, we haven't charged anybody yet. We're trying to be consistent about this, so that's why we went to this. So, in January, we can send out new notices to say, hey. And then anybody that gets a notice, if they'll just contact code enforcement, or even reach out to the mayor's office, we're gonna go see them. We are not trying to make them build some five thousand dollar fence.
Do you uh, well, people have, have uh built different ones, of course, but.
I'm just using that as a number, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't know if you had any kind of a number of how many citations had been written.
No.
I haven't seen any.
So far, on the ones that have contacted the mayor's office and code enforcement, gone out, looked at them, made suggestions. And worked with them all. So, there's not been any citations, no fines, no anything. If they come to them, we work with them.
Yeah, and I think the important part for the city, I understand, we've made a point over the last three years to clean up the city, okay? We start with Wendy's. And you look at things we've done, code enforcement, we've got two code enforcement now to go out there and just try to get everybody to keep everything cleaner. So, with that, Mike, we don't want your money. We don't want it at all. We just want you to make sure your place sets kind of an expectation of when you come into our city, how does it look? Within that first mile both ways, especially if you're just traveling on sixty-five, you're probably just grabbing some gas and something to eat. We just wanna make sure you see a city that's getting cleaned up. We've done a lot in the last few years, and I appreciate what both Jeff and Ray do. It's not an easy job, but they handle everybody very well. They really go out there and try to be courteous, professional with them, and say, hey, listen, we just wanna see you get resolved. So, I would say this, Mike. We wanna be consistent then. If we come back and we see that there's something that's punitive in this down the road, I don't have to amend it again if we have to. I just wanted to make sure we're consistent in the scales of what we're at, we're charging for that. So, I, I'm open to it. I, I just know that when we talked to Ray and Jeff, and this is what they wanted. We wanna do something because these are the guys out on the streets. So, I just need, you know, if you got some other ideas, I'm, uh if you guys, you tell me what you think. But we were just trying to be consistent as far as what we are actually gonna implement out here in the community.
Is everything, is everything in the old ordinance in the new one?
Yeah, we, all we do is change the, the fee, the rates.
I mean, if it's all there, why do we need two? It just, to me, it just.
Specifically.
We need two.
The uh oh eighteen two sixty-nine, is everything that's in that ordinance? Also in oh twenty-five or oh fifty?
No, cuz oh fifty is just going to amend the two sixty-nine. And so, if that passes. Then what I'll send to Ray and Jeff will be a new oh one two six nine, that the only change now would be the, in the penalties.
No, I meant, what I meant was, is everything that's in the old ordinance. Also in the new one, not just the fines.
Oh, yeah, they're just amending the fines.
No, cuz we're just amending the fines. The new ordinance is only amending the fines and nothing else from oh eight two sixty-nine is in here.
Yeah. Guys, like this, this is one of these moving targets. This is one of the things we wanna do, keep the city clean. If you think like that. We can change anything we want to on this. The idea is to get aesthetically our, our city cleaner. We have places you can drive around, you see these dumpsters.
I just figured it'd be easier to work with one ordinance versus two or a many.
We will have one.
We'll only have one. We'll only have one.
But it's all done. It'll be one ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah. No, I appreciate it. Any other comments? And I would like to encourage you guys. And, and if you have any questions over the next, I know it's Thanksgiving, but make sure by at least Monday or Tuesday of next week, if you got any questions, please reach out to either Ray, Jeff. Or Catherine. About any question, you can reach out to me if you want to, but I mean, obviously, from a legal standpoint, you got her and you got the two guys that do it. I'd highly recommend you call them. So that you have information that you might need, that you're ready to go, and you call me afterwards. If you talk to them and you don't like something, call me and we can discuss it. Cuz when I next meet, we're gonna make a motion and, and uh try to get this streamlined, okay? All right. Thank you, Ms. Catherine. All right, this next one, I know this guy's gonna come up here, man, this guy. All right, I'm sorry. Eric, could you come up here? And I'm not even gonna tell you about how to push that button. How many times have you pushed that button in your years of being here? No, it's your first reading, first reading. So, I wanna bring Eric up here. Uh Eric, I mean, do we wanna read it first? You just wanna go ahead and bring up just the formality of what you got there?
Yeah, I'm ha- I'm happy to handle it however you'd like. I know.
What are we doing?
But you got a second reading. He's the guy.
This is a, this is a first reading.
First reading, right.
But again, do we have any, any, for these guys here? I mean, all we're doing is this one piece, it's on.
All we're doing is the one-third acre, six ninety-nine, and, and it's the um.
Well, we had the public hearing at the last meeting.
I know. Okay, so everybody's good on this?
I just came, I just came up here to answer any question.
Okay.
That's why.
Okay, so this is, okay, so why don't I read it, and if they've got any questions, we can go that way.
All right. Thank you, Eric.
City of Shepherdsville, Kentucky, ordinance zero two five zero five one, and ordinance amending the Bullock County City zoning order and the Bullock County City zoning map as amended. Changing the zoning of zero point three three acres more or less located at six nine nine North Buckman Street in the city of Shepherdsville, Bullock County, Kentucky. Also known as parcel zero three six S E zero zero six zero zero two from B one highway business to B two central business, sponsored by Councilmember Bonnie Enlow. Summary, section one, the Bullock County Joint Planning Commission held a public hearing on October nine, two thousand twenty-five, docket number two zero two five Z dash five one. And based on the testimony and evidence presented at that hearing, recommended that the Bullock County City zoning order and Bullock County City zoning map be amended to change zoning of zero point three three acres more or less. Located at six nine nine North Buckman Street, also known as parcel zero three six S E zero zero six zero zero two. Hearing after subject property from B one highway business to B two central business. Section two sets forth that the city council had a public hearing on November tenth, two thousand twenty-five. Section three sets forth that the city council adopts the Bullock County Joint Planning Commission's findings of fact and recommendations, including but not limited to any and all restrictions placed on the subject property. As set forth in docket number two zero two five Z dash five one. Section fo- four sets forth that the Bullock County City zoning order and the Bullock County City zoning map are hereby amended to change zoning of the subject property from B one highway business. To B two central business, subject to any restrictions placed on the subject property. Section five sets forth a severability clause. Section six sets forth a repugnatory ordinances in conflict with this ordinance. Section seven sets forth a publication requirement.
All right. And Eric, I appreciate you first of all being here, but again, if you have any questions, it's that small parcel that's sitting around Buckman up behind the.
I, I won't go through it all again. Emily did a far better job.
She did. She took the, I just wanna make sure for you all, if you had any questions, we obviously, and I appreciate you coming out today. But is there anything for you guys? Pretty simple one on this one. Now, this is one of those, if you had any questions, it was simple, he just tying them together.
Did we, did we figure out how, why the uh lane was built up so high, like?
That's just dirt building. There wasn't, that, that's not, he's talking about the construction where he's got dirt piled up in the back. That's not an elevation. Yeah, yeah.
That, that's related to the R three that's already been, and the site plan that's been.
Yeah, but they, she was concerned about the, the height of it. That's just dirt being built up. That's, yeah, it's not gonna be.
Because of the level, leveling out that, that's gonna be correct.
Yeah. So, this is where the um, there used to be campers and um.
Right.
Sheds and the car lot.
Correct, right, just making all of that point consistent, all B two.
Yeah, if you had any questions, if you got off to right here, if you need anything, but it's really, it's pretty simple, it's pretty simple, Eric, thank you for being here. Alright, uh, thank you, Eric, have, hey, happy Thanksgiving to you, sir. Thank you, you and your family, alright, Ms. Catherine, zero two five zero five two.
City of Shepherdsville, Kentucky, ordinance zero two five zero five two, and ordinance amending ordinance zero two five zero one zero adopting the city of Shepherdsville, Bullock County, Kentucky annual budget for fiscal year July one, two thousand twenty-five through June thirty, two thousand twenty-six, by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of city government sponsored by council member Bonnie Inlow. Whereas the city council adopted ordinance zero two five zero one zero adopting the annual budget for the operation of city government for fiscal year July one, two thousand twenty-five through June thirty, two thousand twenty-six on June ninth, two thousand twenty-five, and whereas the city council desires to amend ordinance zero two five zero one zero, now therefore be ordained by the city of Shepherdsville, Bullock County, Kentucky, section one, ordinance zero two five zero one zero adopted on June ninth, two thousand twenty-five is hereby amended as follows. Section two, section one is hereby amended as follows. Resources available in the uh, general fund remain the same at twenty million, eight hundred thousand dollars. Estimated revenue, occupational tax remains the same at eighteen million, five hundred forty thousand dollars. Property tax, deleted three million, six hundred thousand dollars, added three million, nine hundred thousand dollars. Insurance tax remains the same at one million, six hundred thousand dollars, other taxes remain the same at two hundred and seventy-six thousand. Franchise tax remains the same at a hundred and twelve thousand, state incentive pay remains the same at four hundred, nine thousand, three hundred fifty-two dollars. Businesses license remains the same at one hundred, eleven thousand dollars, inspection, building permits, plan review remains the same at thirty-six thousand. Liquor license remains the same at twenty-three thousand, police court warrant reports remain the same at nineteen thousand, administrative services remain the same at ninety thousand. Restrictive revenue remains the same at one million, three hundred thousand, miscellaneous revenue remains the same at five hundred, three thousand. Interest earnings remains the same at six hundred, forty-six thousand, ninety dollars. Municipal road aid remains the same at a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. Total estimated revenues, deleted twenty-seven million, two hundred, sixty-five thousand, four hundred and forty-two dollars. Added twenty-seven million, five hundred, sixty-five thousand, four hundred and forty-two dollars. Um, under map L G and E remains the same at one hundred and ninety-two thousand. Total resources available for appropriations, deleted forty-eight million, sixty-five thousand, four hundred and forty-two dollars. Added forty-eight million, three hundred, sixty-five thousand, four hundred and forty-two dollars, and map L G and E remains the same at a hundred and ninety-two thousand. Appropriations, administration remains the uh, same at four million, four hundred, forty-nine thousand, one hundred eighty-two dollars. Map L G and E remains the same at a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. Public works remains the same at nine uh, million, three hun- three hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. Fire, total payroll expenses remain the same at five million, six hundred, sixty-five thousand, one dollar. Total employee expenses remain the same at one million, two hundred, ninety-eight thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars, forty-six cents. Total department operating expenses remains the same at four hundred, fourteen thousand, eight hundred, seventy-four dollars. Total facilities and equipment expenses, deleted four hundred, eighty-nine thousand, three hundred, twenty-eight dollars, fifty-four cents. Added seven hundred, eighty-nine thousand, three hundred, twenty-eight dollars, fifty-four cents. Total contractor fees and services remain the same at eighty, eight thousand, five hundred dollars, total capital expenses remains the same at seven hundred, seventy-eight thousand, three hundred, five dollars. Total for fire department, deleted eight million, seven hundred, thirty-four thousand, three hundred, five dollars, added nine million, thirty-four thousand, three hundred, five dollars. Police, total expenses remain the same at eight million, three hundred, forty-six thousand, eight hundred, fifty-five dollars. Council, total council remains the same at one hundred, eighty-one thousand, nine hundred, fifty-five dollars, city and park capital expansion remains the same at sixteen million dollars. Overhead remains the same at nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. Total appropriations, deleted forty-eight thousand, I'm sorry, forty-eight million, sixty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Added forty-eight million, three hundred, sixty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Map L G and E remains the same at one hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. Excess of resources, over, under appropriations remains the same at three thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars. Estimated fund balance to be carried forward to fiscal year two thousand twenty-six, two thousand twenty-seven remains the same at three thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars. Section three, this provision, provisions of this ordinance are hereby declared severable, and if any section clause, line, paragraph, or part of this ordinance shall for any reason be declared invalid or unconstitutional, the same shall not affect the validity of the remainder of this ordinance. Section four, all prior ordinances or parts of any prior ordinance in conflict therewith are hereby repealed. Section five, this ordinance is adopted in accordance with KRS eighty-three A point zero six zero, in that it was introduced and given first reading on November twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five, and given second reading on December eighth, two thousand twenty-five, and shall be in full force and effect upon publication and some, and pursuant to KRS cha- chapter four twenty-four.
Because, because I wanna make sure this is the first step, and obviously, when we have a concern with the, but, one line going over, that we actually projected that. But I do wanna explain the revenue piece, right? So we projected, if you look at the revenue, if you look at our property taxes, it's three point six. Alright, we were told, talking to P B, I talked to specifically, that is eighty-five percent of what we get, there's a lot of, you know, how people pay their property taxes. I talked to Clinton Mattingly, he told us that we were going to have four point one million, almost a half a million dollars more coming to us. So it was the easiest place for us to show it, we think occupational tax is gonna be more, uh, for us, and we think obviously building permits are gonna be more for us. So we think we're gonna be higher and all, but it was the easiest way to show you that we know, like ninety-nine percent that our property taxes are gonna be more. That's the best place for us to put it, so we can match it up revenue, so we needed three hundred thousand more revenue, we put it there, and we put it down in the fire department to make it balance. Now, what I'd like to do for you all, and I notice that within this, is that in January, we're gonna go through our budgets and make sure if there's anything else that might be over budget, we'll bring it to you guys, cuz I mean, that's the commitment I made to you, I wanna make sure that we take care of that in this budget, alright?
The three hundred is to take care of the fire.
The fire truck, yeah, yeah, and we'll always explain what we're doing, what, cuz we had a couple of things that we've done already, our budgets still look good. Uh, and just so you all know, that we're, they're really managing the payroll piece of this, which is a big part of it. I, I'm very proud of both those guys back there, uh, yeah, you two guys back there, you two guys, you, you guys, you guys. And, and the rest of our departments, Brenda here in her department, uh, everybody's doing a good job, and they've really done a good job with the budget, but there may be one that goes over that line, we're gonna make sure you know. Alright, cuz I, I told you, we do that, make sure.
Motion to approve.
But I like it, I like your attitude, though, it's going places with that, and I like that, I like it.
Is this, uh, have anything, the, the additional funds, is that for the?
The fire truck that's coming in, the insurance is gonna be short three hundred thousand, that's why we have to pick it up, but we were not budgeting that, they came, we got the bad news probably about three months ago.
So what did we get from the insurance payout?
I think six hundred thousand on the nine, nine hundred thousand dollar truck.
So that and the three hundred thousand will be enough to? Okay, so we're be right in the ballpark then, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Hey, Jody, did I see correctly that?
Yes, you did.
You know where I'm going, did I see correctly that our, that our wreck truck is already on the market?
Seven hundred and forty-eight.
So, I saw, it, it, if, and I think I said something about the fire truck market here, not going, that in a nutshell is the fire truck market. Ten or fifteen years ago, what, what would have happened to that truck? It would have sat in a scrapyard for six yard, for six or eight months, it probably would have been parted out. And some companies already scooped it up, refurbished it, and they're selling it for seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, I wonder if they had a relation with the insurance company.
Not only that, faster than we could allocate funds and buy a new one, they've already got it back on the market.
And I think that's probably, that's probably part of what you see, right, we talked about how like three or four years before you get a truck, so I'm sure that there are a lot of municipalities looking for trucks, and I mean, it's a business that's out there, I mean, obviously with the insurance company. I don't know, yeah, cuz you don't really know when it gets, I mean, what they did to it, but I mean, hey, there's probably some places that need something. I hate to say it, but that's still quite a bit of money for a truck that's been wrecked, especially severely like that. Interesting, well, glad you picked up on that, sir. Yeah, so anyway, so again, that, if, is there any questions?
Jennifer called me, has that, she said, did you see that? I was like, oh my gosh, that's our truck.
I want a second body, I want a second body's motion.
It's, it's the first reading, we're doing.
Oh, it's the first reading.
Jeff, alright, Rob, do you have something?
Um, we haven't purchased it yet, right?
What's that?
We haven't purchased any truck.
Uh, we, no, we're waiting for the truck to get here, yeah.
Okay, and then we purchase it, right?
We pay the, yeah, we pay the dividends on, we, right now, we got our credit in our, in that account, we're just waiting for the truck to get here to pay for, wha- what's your question?
Okay, just making sure that we haven't bought it yet.
No, we, yeah, we gotta make sure we see it first to, see before we buy it.
Yeah, I was talking more like voting, vote on amending the budget before we buy it, cuz if we didn't vote to approve it, then, you know.
Okay, the truck is needed, so what you're saying, I'm letting you know, yeah, so right now, it's amending the purchase of that truck. Alright, okay, alright, any other questions? Alright, with that said, alright, so planning and zoning, uh, I'm a, uh, go ahead. I mean, we had four of us there, and it was really nice to have it, we had Mike, Bonnie, myself and Catherine there, it was tough.
Couple weeks ago, I attended the planning commission meeting to present the text amendment. Bonnie and Mike came, thank you all for coming, Bonnie spoke up, thank you, um, it was interesting, um, it did pass, so, which for us really wouldn't have mattered because it's coming back here and we, we would have passed, but they gave a favorable, I shouldn't say it passed, they gave a favorable recommendation, after quite a bit of discussion, um, cuz there were a few that well, one person didn't understand why we were even coming there for a text amendment, even though I tried to explain, and um, I think there was some confusion, and some people felt like it should be in business in zone, which I was like, well, we can allow it, but we can't prevent it from being in um, residential, so it'll be interesting. Um, I sent all my research to uh, the county attorney, Tammy Baker, um, it'll, they, they are working on um, overhauling the zoning regulations, this will be addressed, she said, so it'll be interesting when, when they go through that process, because I think there was some concern about allowing it in residential, which as you guys know, to the death of you, I'm sure, that we have to, we can't prevent it from being in residential, it's just discrimination, so they're gonna find that out eventually when they work through this. But it'll be coming back, I anticipate that we might have it before, and so maybe our first reading can be December eighth, um, on the ordinance.
It was a challenge, I think there was just a, I mean, just, first of all, it was just a process of why we had to be there, but it was like an hour conversation.
It was a very interesting meeting.
He asked like six times. You know, okay, there's a process, we had to go there, and I think the, the thing for us is, I do think the interesting piece of the, is the residential piece in this thing, the whole terminology to start with. And Bonnie actually stood up and kinda shared her thoughts about why we're in this situation.
Yep, she actually did, she, she knows, she represented the council.
She did, she represented us well.
Very well, and um, you know, was very professional, but made her point about the, the concerns and about the fact that one time they, for Alpha Ministries, they did, they decided to go with R three, and for this one, it was B one, and um, I think we even had some planning commission members that said, oh, well, we wouldn't have done our, to do it again, they wouldn't have done Alpha Ministries R three. And I was like, no, you got that one right.
Yeah, they got that one, uh, I was my usual blunt self.
You were good, though.
But I, I pretty much let them know that it was all their fault that we had all the troubles we did. It has been.
So there's, so, so the, the, the thing for us in this, planning and zoning is a, a very difficult thing, I think the structure of it does not represent Shepherdsville very well, that's been my biggest concern. But I'll say this, I want you all to know this on public record, Jeremy Cuback represents us well.
He did a good job.
I mean, I'm telling you.
He, he did not allow, so they came to do a site, they wanted a variance to not put in a sidewalk. And Jeremy had been building that coalition, because he had people in agreement of if we give you, and it, cuz this was a new build, not an existing building, that was just tweaking something, and so that variance did not pass, they will have to build that.
And Tony Thompson really helped with that, he really helped push that, that they kept, stop giving variances for that, because eventually there'll be no sidewalks anywhere, if they do that, and then the city's gonna have to come in and pay.
Somebody's gotta be the first to do it, somebody, like, obviously wherever you go, there's no sidewalks, somebody's gotta be the first.
It was a hard fought battle, that was a long time.
So I just want you all to know, I mean, we picked a guy to be on that uh, planning and zoning, that represents us well, and I've heard from a number of people on that board, as well as people that go to these meetings, that Jeremy does a good job, I know we, we always have a rain joke with you and Bonnie, but but I think it really was, and I think it's important that you, you gotta have people that really know, this is really difficult right now. I mean, we've seen the, we've seen the, we've seen the planning, uh, we've seen the zoning, we've not seen the planning sometimes, I mean, really the frustration over the last twenty years in the city. So we're, now we're seeing that, I know, hoping that a few more people, uh, I'd like to see it restructured to have more voices on that for Shepherdsville. Uh, I think it would be, that would be the first thing, but I will tell you, that's a good thing, and then what will happen is, if there are partners that are already in that industrial park, if they're trying to build other pieces there, guess what has to happen first? You're gonna, you're gonna have to build your sidewalks first, and I, I'd rather that be on record, that we have that, because that connectivity has to be back there. Unfortunately, for whatever reasons, and I think even in the short period of time, I've seen that, I see why they say it, but it doesn't make sense, if nobody does it, you never get started with the connectivity piece back there. And you are having people that ride bikes and even walk back there, so let's, let's just make sure that piece gets down, but I, I wanna make sure that Jeremy gets some props, he's, I hope he's watching, we're rooting for him.
He did good.
Yeah, he did good.
Jeremy won grace back.
Is he gonna get a Christmas card?
Yeah, I could have a Christmas card.
He's gonna get a Christmas card, alright, Board of Adjustments, uh, Wayne said that we really didn't have a whole lot going on, so I don't know what's going on in the next meeting there. Uh, Department has, obviously, I've got two fine gentlemen, come up together, just do it together, come on up here, come on up here, let's just get two for one. We're almost finished here, we're, if it wasn't for Arthur going so long, I'm blaming it on you, Arthur. That's, we, we'd have been done at six forty-five, but you know. You did good.
I wish you'd show up at more meetings, really. So if we have questions, we can ask you.
I think tonight, uh, kind of a change of things of get more people up in front, I'm gonna turn it over to Sergeant Creason, and have him come up and give a presentation. Alright, so there you go. Sorry, he gave you a look when we came up here, it's like, come on, join the party, uh, just, you know, I'll open up to really any questions you all have. The big thing is, you obviously, everybody in here, and you all have a happy Thanksgiving, we're looking forward to light up Shepherdsville, which will be December sixth. We're working on a few things, we're tweaking the uh, parade route and, and all that. One thing, we did, after discussing with the mayor and some others, we're, we're moving back to shut down the road ju- just right before six o'clock. Last year, we shut it down, I think at four o'clock to let more people out in the street and vendors, but given the traffic situation this year, we're just moving it back to six, we're hoping to have them through and it back open in probably thirty-five minutes.
Yeah, thirty minutes, we're looking for thirty minutes to do as quickly as possible, if something happens, we'll just veer the whole thing off down the abbott or plum and just move it out of the way.
And we, and we made that, um, also too, there was some things on Facebook, and like a lot of people might know this, but you're best to go to that uh, Kentucky Transportation Cabinet website, they will keep you up to date on things and what's coming. And I noticed like last week after everything opened up, there were still some delays, and I was trying to look it up real quick, and it seems like for the next, actually through the, I think the December first of the year, there's gonna be some rolling roadblocks between two and three on sixty-five north and south as they uh, do some blasting along the interstate, so hopefully those, they are gonna delay a little bit, but it's a half hour probably. And move on, so you know, just try to keep up to date with their, with their side, and you know, we're frustrated just like everybody else is, and you know, I've, I've, I've talked to them, we thought they were actually done, it was a misunderstanding on my part, I told all of my people that they were done after last Thursday. Then Friday, we had the shutdown.
Well, I think they closed because of the weather, didn't they?
Well, no, I don't think, I don't think, from what we were talking to him, I was calling, making sure they didn't have anything planned the weekend of the sixth, to interfere with the light of Shepherdsville, and they just opened the southbound lanes, I thought they said they were done for the year, but part of that was shutting them down that weekend, and there was a little confusion, so, you know, they're done for the rest of the year into the spring next year for all this, so hopefully we won't have that to deal with. Um, I don't wanna go a little bit long, but just for everybody that's on Facebook or constituents calling in, you know, the, when they closed the bridge at um, thank you, um, it was like the perfect storm that week, because people did not have through, you know, things we, people controlling the weather, but people can't, but they never had a good chance to learn their way around, or to guess how long they had to adjust their schedules, because they closed it on Monday, um, but the Monday night, we had a wreck that closed down forty-four in front of Robey. That took, took, that backed everything up, that never recovered that night. The next night is when they shut down one lane on Southbound sixty-five, which caused everything, then we had the rain through Rushire. Uh, so people really didn't get a chance, I'm a firm believer, people will figure ways of how they can adjust their schedule, do things, sometimes they just can't. And you know, that kinda goes to this past weekend we've had, um, you know, we will try to bring more people out when we know in the future when they're gonna do it. But to talk to people and people listening, you know, there's only so much we can do. Um, Saturday, we had ten accidents just on day work, uh, we've got, you know, a set amount of people out. Um, we also have to be cognizant of, you know, people's safety first, property, traffic, kind of after those. What my job is, and what we have to do, plan for is, okay, look, you know, the city's split in the middle by sixty-five, Salt River splits it the other way. So when all this is gonna happen, I've gotta worry about having enough officers, he's gotta worry about having people EMS that could be split. So when they say, we don't see the police anywhere, well, you know, half my shift is down south of the river, trying to take care of runs, assisted medical runs, the other half is up here, it's taken us forty-five minutes and hours to get to places too.
I was gonna ask how it's affecting the, the call times, like.
It does, we, we, we had a guy that, you know, took forty-five minutes to go from. It does. We, we, we had a guy that, you know, took forty-five minutes to go from Cedar Grove up to, up to Walmart. So, you know, we're all affected by this too, and we, we're limited by, we only have, you know, that certain area. And when that happens, realize that, you know, we're trying to position people, and then it's the thing, why aren't the police out there directing traffic? Well, when you have a shutdown like over this weekend, where are we gonna direct them to? It's gridlocked.
North, directing north.
Well, there's, there's, I mean, if you took every law enforcement officer that's working in Bullock County, there wouldn't be enough to do anything with that traffic. And, you know, I'll address this issue too, is why aren't you all out? Because the big thing, the problem is, is, you know, the light turns, somebody comes out there thinking, I guess they're gonna get somewhere a half second quicker and blocks the intersection. Okay, when we're not out making the runs, the accidents, we put a car at that intersection, okay, we send a car out and stop that car. What are we doing?
Create more traffic.
We're creating more traffic. So do we try to follow them down somewhere and pull them over and, you know, we might have to do that to try to set some examples, but it's not as easy as some people think that you can just do this. Same way, one suggestion was be down around two forty-five and, and four eighty, and run certain people this way and run certain people all the way to LJ. So are we supposed to stop every car at the intersection? Which way do you need to go? What's that gonna do? So some of these just aren't realistic. We've looked at changing the, you know, the times there at the max, so we'll try to bring some more people out where maybe we can do something, with the cars going through the intersection. But the main thing is, we gotta make sure we can make the trouble runs, the domestics, the accidents. Uh, that, that was the other one. The second night after this started, Bell's Mill, we had four accidents between McDonald's and Robey on forty-four. It took that entire shift. So, just, so you all know what we're kinda dealing with.
I think it's important for them to know, because we obviously talk about who's responsible for these roads, but we're also talking about, that's one of the comments that you hear. And we wanna make sure people know that, you know, we're cognizant of all of that. Me and you talk every day. Maybe too much, right?
Hey chief, if you give me a baseball bat, I'll stand nearby like, dare them to block it.
Well, I mean, it, it's, it's also, it also has to do with courtesy when you're driving.
Yes.
Let somebody out, go. Let somebody out, go. I mean, the zipper thing works. I mean, but a lot of people won't use that.
Well, perfect example. Peo-, you know, people get frustrated, this is gonna be going on for four or five more months, and, you know, at least with the bridge closure. That one is a little bit easier, because people can't adjust their behavior.
Right.
And whatever. When the interstate shuts down, that's, that's more of a like, there's not a whole lot we can do. But today I pulled in the five star, uh, there on forty-four, and I went to turn to go towards Mount Washington, and nobody, and it's like, you'd think, you know,
Right. Somebody would give you a little spot.
Where are you going?
Thank you, Jamie.
We're just gonna do that, so. But o- other than that, you know, we're working with it, we're looking to see what we actually can do, but there's always more behind the scenes. And I'll say, you know, a little bit of grace towards the highway department. They've got their things, they have contractors, they have this or that. And sometimes, you know, we don't know the whole story, so maybe there's something more to it, so cut them a little slack there.
Yeah, I, I do think the important thing about KYTC is, I think because you, you don't, living in the area that we, obviously we are, they're, they're planning it, like you mentioned contractors. We understand that, but when, when you look at the sensitivity of Bullock County, that's all we want. It's just to maybe throw something at us, maybe we can help out, because we're on the ground right there, we see it. That one was just a lot for us. If you take out the Bell's Mill thing, and then you put that, the five miles, with just one lane on sixty-five, that, that's a challenge, because then you're really gridlocking, with no place to go, you gridlock. I mean, that, it's like a mile for, you know, two hours for a mile. So I think that most people, if they just hear, they listen to this, uh, the city council meeting, they'll at least understand, we're not telling you to go scream at KYTC. We're asking you to tell them, hey, this is what happens when you guys do this. So that, that, they're just notes. I mean, it's like we say, the squeaky wheel gets the oil. We just want you to think a little bit more about that. And then, again, when it comes to the legislators, we just need to make sure we know who they are. Just say, hey, guys, you've seen it, you live here too, you see all that. Just let's get, let's push a little harder for some of that funding that's coming down the pike. And again, we, we don't have that discretion. The governor has that discretion and all the folks that are up there, but they would like to make sure, art, we're growing. We're one of the fastest growing counties in the state. We're in the top five. So infrastructure is probably our number one priority and try to get those things done. And we're expecting Tom to get out there with a whistle, direct traffic on sixty-five.
So, um, you mentioned intersections too. Mount Washington, around their park, they have signs that flash that say, do not block intersection. And I'm sure that wouldn't help tremendously, but it would help a little bit, I believe.
Remember.
Like all traffic controls were out the window the other day. It was like people returning from the, or going straight from the turning lane, all kinds of stuff.
To remind him on his point, that's Mount Washington's road. That's not our road.
Yeah, I'm sure we'd probably have to work with.
KYTC. Maybe it's something else. But I mean, but just remember, there's flexibility. If it's your road, you can do things to it. If it's not your road, you gotta go.
Maybe even permission, and the permission thing, like if we even had like portable, portable signs.
Well, if we had portable signs, we really wouldn't need any permission. It'd just be a question of finding it, you know, as a reminder, but if you do it at,
Right.
Buckman and forty-four, and then up around, or Adam Shepherd and forty-four, maybe the main ones put something going up to them.
Yeah.
I appreciate it.
And we all know it's human nature to, to vent. We're all gonna vent, you know? Just gotta let it go in this area and out this area.
Right. Other chief?
Um, we have a lot going on. Uh, just, I had a lot of questions about, uh, Jennifer called me the other day. She asked me, what is Bullock County Special Operations? Um, special operations is anything outside the firefighting room. When we talk about trench rescue, we had a trench rescue class this year. Trenches that, uh, Arthur talked about digging trenches for, um, his pipes, okay? They, they, so we, we have trench training where people are trapped inside those, that's a specialty training. Of course, water. We all got the education on water this year. Hazardous materials, confined space, which is someone's trapped in like a, a Jim Bean, the big, the big containers full of alcohol out there. Those are trench, or excuse me, a confined space, and of course rope rescue. Um, we've done a lot of those, those this year because of the county. The county gave us a hundred and fifty thousand dollars this year. And what we did with that money is we make sure that we bought equipment, we bought PPE, and then some, uh, other types of special training. We used that for that. Um, right now, uh, Shepherdsville, of our, our members, ninety percent are water technicians, a hundred percent are hazardous materials technicians, a hundred percent are confined space, a hundred percent are rope technicians, and the other, uh, trench is the hardest one, fifty percent of them are there. So when you say Bullock County, it's all of our fire departments are combined to do those trainings. I, I cannot manage a hazardous material incident, a trench, ha-, uh, rope. I can't manage that by myself. I have to have other fire departments to go with, go with this. So, um, when the floods happen, um, we went to, uh, Chief Moten went to the magistrate, and we got a hundred and fifty thousand to train as many members of the county that we could thi- this year.
Great thing, and you did water rescue last week. I thought that was really cool.
Sir?
Water rescue.
Oh, yes, yes. They, they did a class down at, uh, Millman. We put, uh, twenty-six through that class. So that, that's a, just saying, just so you all know, it's just a lot of, uh, every single one of those classes are forty hours, right? Nothing's three days anymore. Um, remember, three day classes are easy, but now they're all forty hours, so it's a lot of training and education for the guys. And hopefully next year is just a recert year where we can just manage, uh, those. So just, if you see anything that's out there on social media, it's Bullock County Special Operations, it's all of our departments combined to, to mitigate any of these emergencies.
So are you all, are you all gonna do these training, like the training tra-, you said recertification, but are you all gonna do the trainings until every department is a hundred percent on everything?
That is the goal.
Okay.
That is the goal, and of course the funds. We have the instructors, all of our instructors are in-house. Uh, Zonton has instructors, we have instructors that are certified through the state that teach these specialties. That's the best part of it. And of course, our sewer department this year saved us, I can't tell you how much money on digging a trench, right? I mean, you'd have to pay five or six to other contractors out there do that. And also, they created a trench, uh, they did a trench, they did confined space emergency for us. They built it right in the middle of their property where we held those trainings. So that was the other best part, is we saved tons of money just on, um, their folks. Just, yeah, you got a bulldozer, we'll dig a trench for you. And daily, they finished that tr-, because you know it rained, so it would fall in. They would, their guys would go out and clean it out for us, and it was, it was amazing.
I wanna make sure you all, I'm gonna brag about you guys, sewer, uh, department, we're in the fire department, because as Police Chief said, that, he said, there's quadrants. It's a sixty-five breaks it up and the Salt River. So the fuel, uh, that we're putting down there at the sewer department actually has a sway of fuel there in case we get blocked off. So they're actually working together and that, having it there. So I think it's really awesome. I mean, I, I learned about that about six months ago. I think it's really cool. Those kind of things, we, we have to think about that. We have a river that gets in the way, right? We have an interstate that gets in the way, is what we try to do in our, in our city. But I think that's a great way to partner up with things, and I think that's gonna be really cool.
And you all do it at night and during the day? So like, they have to be trained at night and during the day too, so they're doing two training.
Oh, oh, it's that, that was all one thing. Them guys were going sixteen hours a day this past week.
Oh, they were doing day and night on the same day?
Same day. Yes. It, it's just operations that, you know, the floods, when they happen, it's, you gotta train them everything at night.
Yeah.
So they, they, it was a really crazy week for them. Um, yeah, any other questions on special ops?
Not right yet. If I, if I have some, I'll call you.
Um, I'm.
But I think it's a great thing. I, I love, um, I love learning about it.
Like I told you, thank you for reading and thank you for calling, any, anytime. Um, January seventeenth, you all will get im- invitations. That's gonna be our, um, awards banquet. We're gonna have it at the American Legion. It'll be from six to ten. All right, you'll, you'll get, um, I'll, I'll send you all an email.
What's the date?
Invitation for that. I'm sorry, sir. The seventeenth at, it's, uh, Saturday.
January seventeenth at what time?
Uh, six to ten.
You gonna have karaoke?
Afterwards. It's on, hey, heck, you never know.
Is it the American Legion?
Oh, City Road. Yes, ma'am. And then, um, last but not least, uh, Santa will be, we're gonna put Santa in the park this year for the last, second two weeks. At, the, the two weeks after Light Up Shepherdsville, um, we're gonna have Santa in the park. The, the police and I, we're gonna tag team on, um, fire truck, police car out there for a couple hours each night. I think we're gonna go six to eight or something like that to bring your kids out and see Santa in the park. Are you gonna be Santa?
No.
No.
I know, I surely, I surely liked seeing all those pictures that you've had with your water training. I'd sure hate to, some of that was, I imagine, pretty cold water and.
We should have some videos.
It was right up there. They were.
You still have those, the videos I did?
They, they, yes, they have some more. They did videos this past week too.
Yeah.
And I'll get those out for you.
It was, uh, it was amazing what they were going through down there.
Yes, yes, sir. Thank you all.
Tell them, thank you so much. You got any questions? Anybody good? Thank you, chiefs.
All right.
All right. So Arthur, run. Happy Thanksgiving, you guys. Uh, so did you have anything else? I mean, I know you're ready to go, then thank you. And then, like I said, just reach out, get, schedule time, and, uh, Arthur or Scott will take you over there to give it to her on that part. All right.
I'm gonna give him. Jennifer, give him a date? Yeah, I'm giving him some dates. What date? Um, uh, it's, well, it's all, pretty much all the next week except for four. I'll send it to you too. Okay, 'cause I'm pretty booked next week too. Couple of them are all days, and then there's two that are at, at, in the afternoon.
All right. Arthur, thank you so much. Be safe.
Thanks, Arthur.
Talk to you tomorrow. All right, just a couple of things before I get to the council. First of all, I want you all to know that we did sign the contract with the University of Louisville Hospital South for a hundred thousand dollars, and I wanna thank Courtney Burden for making that happen. So we get twenty thousand dollars for the next five years.
For the, for the.
Playground.
Playground.
Mm-hmm. So we got that finalized, and I wanna thank her. I know she's not here. She's got another obligation, but I wanna make sure you all know, our fo-, our folks are working together to try to get some, getting our grants. I know Sam's working on a grant now for some things for the, for the fishing behind Station Two. So everybody's doing some good stuff. I wanna make sure you know that. I also always bring it up, this time, it's getting close. We're about a month away of a bit more than that bounty hope. We do it every year. This is our eighteenth year of doing Bounty of Hope. And basically, Christmas Day, we cook about four to five hundred meals. So all I can encourage all of you to do is if you know somebody on Christmas Day that's by themselves, a couple of, that nobody comes to see them, make sure we get that. We do make deliveries. We've got volunteers that'll help us with that. Uh, but I also wanna make sure that we just, I know I'm working a lot with the schools right now, because a lot of them know which families are really having a tough time. And just to stop by and bring them some meals, and they're more than welcome to stop by and pick them up too. So we normally ask them to do that, but if there's a, a way that you can't get out, we'll bring them to you. I got enough people that wanna help with that. It's been something we've done for eighteen years, and I tell you, a lot of people really appreciate it, but I'm telling you, it'll break your heart sometimes if you see the folks that are coming to get some of these things. We really need to help them out. And this is a great way to tell them that we're thinking about it. Um, special meeting. Now, we, uh, I got a checklist. I know Bonnie is, you're not. Jennifer, are you gonna be here for the meeting on the sixteenth at five o'clock? Just need to make sure we got four.
Um, yeah, I'm gonna, I gotta, I gotta check my schedule at work to see if I can.
Will you just, yeah, just, would you let us know tomorrow?
Yes, I will.
All right, so Mike is, yeah, Rob, you said you were, for sure. You're not gonna be there? Okay, no worries. All right, Mike?
Yes.
Uh, you did okay. All right, so we just, we, we, Jennifer, no pressure.
What are we doing?
Okay, wait a minute.
For the special meeting.
Sixteen.
Our special meeting, we need to have at least a quorum.
Yeah, I didn't know anything about it.
It was supposed to be the nineteenth.
It's for Arthur. Oh, did we not? Yeah, it's, it's, yeah.
He switched it.
He switched it to the sixteenth. It's a, it's a Tuesday.
Were you not on that email?
I didn't either, so it was, all right, so you didn't know, I apologize. I don't know, I didn't even, I didn't even look for you, I didn't look for you.
I can be here.
All right, so we got a four, listen, we understand. We get it.
So what is this, the sixteenth at five?
Yeah, it's a special meeting for the, for the bid, for the sewer.
Okay.
It's for the sewer. I, I'll forward that to you, or Brenda will forward it to you. And council, all I think I wanna keep you in mind, one last thing. Yeah, that's a, is that a Friday or something like that?
Yeah, talking, let's go.
All right, I'm trying to hurry up. All right, so.
Sorry, that's Arthur's phone. He didn't copy me on the email, that.
So just so you know, in January, I'm gonna ask you guys to take out of our checking account a quarter of a million dollars and move it into that loan fund. Just want you all to know that I had time. I'm gonna make sure, just to verify everything we have, but that would put us over two and a half million dollars in the, to pay the loan. That gives us almost a, a year plus. So we wanna make sure that by, hopefully the next, a year from now, we have at least three plus, meaning that we'll have almost two years of payments on the money we borrowed. And just for everybody else, as we know this, but we, again, we talked about the park plans that Arthur was talking about. Thirty million that we borrowed, and ten more million we put in the city and didn't raise a tax. Didn't raise a tax. All right, council, Bonnie, hurry up.
Everybody have a blessed Thanksgiving.
All right, Brad? All right, good. Jennifer?
Um, can we, okay, so I know we're talking about the roads and stuff like that. Can we not work with Tom, Mike, Peyton, Jerry, all the magistrates that are within our city, city boundaries? And have them come in and tell us their plans for our, those, those roads, because those roads affect us. So what are they doing? You know, are they, is, is Tom, Peyton, or are they?
Or Mike, those are three, Tom, Mike and Mike Neves.
Are they up in the state? Well, in the county roads too. What are, what are their plans for our county roads? I mean, those.
That could be, that'd be Jerry Summers and.
Jerry and the magistrates.
And Road Department.
Yes, and so can we get them in here to tell us what their plans are, like what they want to, to see happen?
Yeah, we could either go, we could either do it where we go then.
We want them to go, like the three, we want them in Frankfurt getting money for our roads.
We've been discussing that with them for about two and a half years.
Well, I think the people wanna hear it.
No, I think, no, I think it's important.
You should have them at our.
Well, I don't know if we can, they'll have them, our meeting, we may have to go to their meeting and make a presentation.
Yes.
We can't just ask them to come to our meeting.
Yeah, I mean, we, we could.
We could, but I mean, but I think more importantly for us, I think we would wanna go to fiscal court. Yes, Karen?
There is a meeting scheduled seven to nine.
Yeah, there is a meeting for KYTC. Yeah, I think the important thing is, I think that, you know, if we're getting everybody to at least make their concerns known, that we've been talking to them. And again, it is funding. A lot of this funding happens out, if we got approved for it tomorrow, it would still be five or ten years before this would happen. I think people need to understand, this isn't gonna happen in six months. But I mean, this, if we'd had this fifteen, twenty years ago, probably most of, some of these things would be taken care of. And I'm blaming anybody, I just think it's kind of a proactive approach to it.
Ten, ten or twelve years ago, didn't they?
Yeah, I went to it.
And, yeah, I felt that.
I went to two of them.
But we'll, we're gonna ask them.
I mean, Mike came here to get a check or a, a word or something when he came.
They wanted to do him.
So he'll come talk, I know. He, he's very open to talk.
All right, Bob?
Um, happy Thanksgiving. I talked about drainage, I talked about traffic. I'm, I'm good, I'm happy.
Well, I already addressed my question about splash pad, you know, um, 'cause you know how I feel about that.
I do.
I'll be here.
It'll look beautiful when it's all done.
I feel, I'll be back, you know?
Speaking of beautiful, you look beautiful.
Thank you. I don't feel it, but that's okay. I feel good.
Yes.
Went back to the gym today, so. But anyways, happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Love y'all.
Mike?
Yeah, I just wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, safe travels. You probably won't get far if you're having it in town. But I also wanted to mention, when Jennifer mentioned Jerry and the magistrates, made me think of a rock band. I, I, I'm done for the night.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. I need a motion, motion adjourned. Second?
Second.
All right. Brenda? Got Robin, Bonnie.
Mike?
Yes.
Peyton?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you all. Listen, be safe, have a good Thanksgiving.